Okay. We're gonna go ahead and call the committee of the whole meeting to order Tuesday, March 26th at 7:00 PM. We'll cite them on the agenda as roll call.
Rusato?
Here.
Atak?
Here.
Chancic?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone? And McFannin?
Here.
Okay, we do have the necessary quorum. We're gonna go on to item number two, which is the reminder for everyone to use the microphone. And if anybody from the audience is gonna address us, please make sure you come up to the podium and use the microphone so we can get a good recording and everybody at home that's listening can hear what we have to say. Item three is approval of the minutes for March 5th, 2019. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the minutes? Any none? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Motion by Chancic, second by Salvati. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, it's carried. Item four, items removed, added or changed. The only thing we're gonna do is we're gonna move project status down to right before others. So we're gonna move that, and that's all we're gonna have to change tonight. Item five is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. If anybody in the public has anything for us that's not on the agenda? Seeing none? We're gonna go to consent agenda. One item, ordinance 19-26 declaring surplus property from the electric utility. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Motion by Chancic, second by Malley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that'll go on to city council. Item number seven, ordinance 19-25, approve the fire code variance for 1335 South River Street for the above-ground fuel tank. Alman Wolf?
Thank you. This is for an above-ground fuel tank installation at Funway. And for the memo, there's quite a few conditions and factors involved in allowing this there. Turn it over to the fire chief if he has any comments here on this.
Actually, if you don't mind, I'm gonna turn it over to the fire marshal and let him do it.
Is he fine with me?
This is John Kessler. I don't know if everybody's with him.
Hi, John.
Hello. Hi. So, if you wanna go through this, I guess I'm somewhat familiar with these. We're working with above-ground tanks at the business that I'm at. So if you wanna explain what they had to go through and what we're talking about.
I was approached by Dennis Kintop and Bob Hanson to discuss a variance for the above-ground tank. As in the amendments, it is prohibited in the city of Batavia. The cost of digging for an underground tank was prohibitive. It's based on the terrain. They're down near the river. There's not much dirt on top of the bedrock, so that would increase the cost. The gas container, the above-ground container, is integral to running the operations they have going there. And we don't see any major issues with them having one above-ground with the restrictions that we've imposed on it. The tanks themselves are constructed to UL standards. They have self-containment, and they're intrinsically safe.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
So, the dual-walled?
Correct.
Right? Are we gonna have any kind of, like, a secondary containment in case of any kind of failures with the proximity to the river?
The secondary containment is the outer shell.
Right. I understand that.
Their impact protected for the secondary containment. So the state fire marshal and UL don't require diking or any other kind of secondary containment for that type of container.
I understand that.
I'm sorry.
But I just, I just was hoping we could have some sort of a secondary con-- they have a secondary containment already, maybe a third, only because of process of the river. This is a freestanding piece of equipment, and if something were to happen to it and fuel were to escape, then it'd start leaching to the river. That's my only concern. I just wanted to have maybe just some kind of a dam. They have them for, they are available to people, and it's gonna be off on its side. So that's what I was hoping for, just as an added precaution.
We could take that under consideration. I'll discuss it with Mr. Hanson and Mr. Kintop.
Thank you.
I think Mike could maybe shed some light on that, too. But I think that poses some other problems, too, Mike, if you do that, because now if you're gonna have a third containment system, a dam, a dike, or whatever around it, it's also gonna collect any rainwater that comes down naturally from the sky that now has to be handled in some manner or fashion. So I think you're trying to prevent something that could maybe somehow possibly if ever happen, and you're causing other complications by asking for that.
Yeah, you know what? I understand what you're saying. But I do this, too. Okay? I mean, on construction sites. And so we do, because of some SWIP protocols we need to follow, we always have to have secondary containment, and we'd go with that added protection. And it's out there. Projects run for a year or longer, and we have these containers that with rain and snow and whatever, it evaporates. So I don't think that's a consideration I worry too much about.
I understand. We can take that discussion up with Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess from my standpoint, and all the years that I've worked in the fuel delivery industry, we have outside tanks, and they have above-ground mark or mountings. And because the containers can only be a certain size, which I think it is 500 gallons, they don't require anything outside around it, the perimeter to the tank, because that size spill is able to be contained other ways with either socks or other types of, you know, equipment that can be put up pretty quickly around it to stop it from going. And the double-wall tank, 99% of the time, is gonna solve that anyway, if it ever leaks. The problems that happen with steel tanks when they're outside within another containment wall is they will rust through from the outside. So that's why I don't think it's probably a great idea to put another barrier around it. And I'm sure if there was a spill, there would be containment protocol, either from the fire department or the owner, that would have to be done to try to contain that from getting to the river. And I think this is probably not immediate to the river. I mean, it's not that close. And 500 gallons is a lot different than 100,000-gallon oil tank that has to have a berm built around it. Marty?
Yeah, I think, along with kind of what Mike's concerns were, I think when I was thinking about where it was in relation to exactly the river, I almost would want it above-ground instead of it being buried and with the soils and all that that are in that area, it would seem like there's more of a problem for contamination, as we've seen in other places where around here that they've, the drums have been buried, that now we're dealing with the cleanup, that I'm almost in preference to it being above-ground with the concerns that were already kind of addressed and with the double lining on it.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
Mike, any question?
Is there secondary containment when the tanks are in the ground?
Not generally. There may be a vault.
Okay. Yeah, I feel okay with this. I think it's just as environmentally detrimental to put the tank in the ground as it is to have it above-ground today. And I think, again, with the size of this tank, I don't think we have a lot to worry about with containing if it does have a leak.
And I think, Mike, you know, to go along with your concern, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I don't agree with you, but I don't agree with you. On a construction site, you've also got a lot of heavy equipment running around and things like that that could possibly hit that tank wherever it's at. Where down here, it's far away from, there's no heavy equipment running around. It's far away from any parking lots, or I don't think there's a chance of any penetration on this. I understand your concern. You're just looking at what if.
I'm gonna just say, listen, I'm gonna support this. I think it's a good thing, you know, help out a business, absolutely. I'll just ask Mr. Hanson, maybe he can think of something. He has a good contractor working for him, that they can come up with an idea. That's all it is. It's close to the river. It's on the west side of Route 25, so, you know, the slope's down to the river. I mean, I'm just taking an added precaution. So I'm gonna support it, but I just think if we can take an added precaution, I'm not opposed to it. But if people don't think we don't need added precautions, well, things happen. And I know we had producers down there, and I don't know what happened down at producers years ago when they left, but I just, I think we need, just need to be more proactive in protecting our environment today, and that's all I'm looking for. Thank you.
Well, we'll also talk to him about maybe some sort of a detection device in case that there is a leak or something like that. I don't even know if there is such a detection out there, but maybe would that be satisfactory as a third preventative measure?
Sure, sure. I mean, it's just whatever we can do just to maintain it.
Yeah, I know that the above-ground tank that we have outside gets inspected by the fire marshal every year, or at least once a year. So I know that that happens. The other thing I wanted to say is maybe we're away from what's actually in the memo, that the above-ground storage tank will be installed inside a reinforced masonry structure for protection and incidental impact. Will it be covered? Will it be inside of a building, or is it just a structure around it to shield it from damage?
Just around it.
Okay. Because I think that, if that's just walled in, then that's another barrier that's gonna stop it from flowing out. So that may be our third one.
Nobody has any other questions? I'd look for a motion to approve ordinance 19-25 for grant of a fire code variance for Funway Entertainment.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Salvati, second by, Mike, sir? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, motion carries.
Sure, we put that on consent.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, resolution 19-022-R, authorize an execution of task order number 15 with Engineering Enterprise for professional engineering services related to the completion of a full water work system calibration hydraulic model for a mountain that exceeds $49,820. Alman O'Brien.
So, this here is, we're looking to basically monitor our conveyance of domestic water. They're gonna let us know if there's any blockage, any shut valves, any breakage, any, just anything slowing it down, if there's any pipes that are gonna be overused or gonna surcharge. So it's basically, we did this 11 years ago in 2008, I believe it was, and they recommend we do it every 10 years, seven to 10 years. And so here it's about 11 years, we're looking to do it again.
Yes, good evening. Pardon me, I'm not the world's best public speaker. But yes, this, the last hydraulic model was done in 2008. Since then, we've made a lot of changes to the distribution system, and this model will help us find all the deficiencies in the system where our fire flows aren't adequate. It'll help us know where the chlorine residuals are lacking and how to get a better chlorine residual to those areas. There's just a whole lot of positives to doing this. It's gonna help us on our ISO rating. I don't think we can get much better than what we are, but it'll definitely keep us from going backwards, for sure. It's gonna help the fire department with fire flows. It'll help the building department with figuring out the proper flows for new developments. There's just a whole lot of positives to this. In 2018--
Could I just interrupt you for a moment, please?
Sure.
And I apologize, I did not introduce you. What is your name?
It's Jeremy. I'm with the Water and--
Oh, you're Jeremy?
Yes.
I thought you were from Engineering Enterprise. I'm sorry, Jeremy Buck. Hi, sorry. Didn't recognize you, you look different.
I got my glasses on, I'm wearing a college shirt.
I apologize. I didn't recognize you at all.
I'd like to introduce Jeremy Buckeye from the Water Department of the City of Batavia, which has the best tasting water in the state of Illinois.
Thank you. So in 2018, I got an engineering estimate for the full city waterworks model, and it came in around 100,000. So I thought, well, I'm not gonna budget that much. I'll do 50 grand in 2019, 50 grand in 2020. We'll do the east side one year, the west side the next year, and then the third year we'll do a, what we call a deficiency scan of all the findings, and we'll also purchase some analytical software. Well, anyway, the prices came in much lower than I had thought. It was 35,000 for the east side, 35 for the west side, and 49 for the total. 49...where is it here? 820. That's a full system-wide, that's a lot of work. There'll be flowing hydrants, about 100 hydrants throughout town to get a good base for their model. And, yeah, I'm just very impressed. Instead of making it in three phases, we can do it in two. I think that's the most cost-effective way to go about it. So I'm asking for your approval on, to execute task order number 15 with EEI.
Any questions or comments? Elliot?
Yeah, I definitely, I'm supportive of this. I mean, it looks, from what was in the memo and from what I'm hearing you say, it sounds like certainly a great deal to take advantage of for the long-term play. How much detection does this give us on our system, though? Can you speak to that a bit? Like, you were talking about new developments that are forthcoming, changes to the water structure that are obviously, you know, to other developments. I mean, what, can you speak to that detection ability with the model?
So, this can get us to the 10-gallon-per-minute range on any main in town. So, in essence, after the second year, once we finish the computerized analytical software, we can click on any main in town and know the exact flow of that main.
And that could help with understanding where perhaps the water main breaks are and being able to pinpoint those with better accuracy, or?
Not so much that. It's more if we have to shut down a tower for maintenance, we'll know what that does to our flows, to our, what that does to a certain area of town. If we have a water main break and we have to do a large shutdown, we can figure out what that's gonna do for isolation purposes and getting chlorine residuals to those areas. Proper fire flows. So, it does a lot. It's very good to have, very good information to keep on file.
Laura?
I just wanted to mention that things like this that improve the performance and efficiency of our water utility significantly contribute to our being able to get that ISO Class 1 certification for our fire department. So this would be another thing that we would be able to demonstrate as being deserving of that.
Correct. Yes, this gets us a lot of points on our ISO rating, having this information.
This will also give us, if we're looking to do any development, let us know if we have enough flow for that development.
Correct, yes. As of now--
Enough capacity.
Chief Kessler, he has to go out and do fire flows for each new development, and that would cease. They can use this calibrated water model as a substitute for that.
Anybody else? Dave?
Jeremy, when they do this, would you expect that it'll show any, I guess I'm gonna call it deficiencies, or issues that we have with the system that need to be addressed?
Yes, that's actually my biggest point for doing this, is it'll show me where all the deficiencies are, the fire flows, the, I mean, we have a pretty good idea now. If it's a small water main, we know we're not gonna have the fire flow we need. But it'll also help us with looping, if we have the proper loops in town. We like to keep everything circuited all the time and moving, so if there's deficiencies that way. I don't know if you guys all know, too, the IEP is proposing to raise our chlorine residual to .5 from a .2 where we are now. If that happens, we're gonna need this quite often to help us figure out how to get that chlorine to move where we want it to. We do have a few areas in town, especially southeast side, that are a little lower chlorine residual, that we're gonna need to get moving out that way.
So, but currently, though, there's nothing in the budget for resolving any of the issues that you're gonna find, so that'll be something that in the future, based on what you find--
Yeah, we'll come up with a 10-year plan and prioritize that. We are taking care of what we know of right now, such as South Prairie Street, a great example of that. We're putting in new water main in 2020. So, we're taking care of them as we see them, but this will help us actually see it much clearer. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Meitzler, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Go consent.
Go consent.
Okay. Thanks, Jeremy. Mike, that's Jeremy.
That's Jeremy. Nice to meet you, Jeremy.
Item number nine, resolution 19-038-R, authorize an execution of a contract for rehabilitation of well number seven with Lane Christiansen of Aurora for a mountain that exceeds $62,355.70. Alman O'Brien.
This here, they tell us Lane Christiansen sells us the pump. It's a Byron Jackson Type H Mercury Seal. They say, you know, it's been in there, they say every seven to 10 years, again, we should service it, or they say maintain and rehabilitate it. So we're about due for that. The people that were using Lane Christiansen only because they're the only people who are certified in the state of Illinois--
Correct.
--to work on these pumps.
Correct.
And so we got only one bid, that was from Lane Christiansen, and they went against the engineer's estimate.
Correct.
And so I think that's pretty much the way we're gonna go. We do have it budgeted, and so it's on the budget, so I think we're in pretty good shape regarding that. So, anybody have any questions or concerns? Mark?
My only question is, do we have other pumps that we can only go to one company to repair them? Is there a way to get out of that in the long run that we have more flexibility?
To be honest with you, we can go out to bid for any of these pumps. I am very in favor of using Lane because they're Type H motors, meaning they're Mercury Seals. There's no moving parts within the, between the pump and the motor, and they're the only ones certified by Byron Jackson to work on those. If we use a competitor, they're not certified, and all the warranties of the Mercury Seal are void, if we go with another repair company, if you will. Their prices actually came in a little over engineers' estimate, about $4,000 over. We questioned that a little bit, and apparently the union contract had some raises in it and things like that. A few things went up. But all in all, it wasn't a terrible bid that they gave us.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking is, are all our pumps this type of pump?
Yes.
That they're the only ones? And would we wanna consider in the future, if we have to fully replace a pump, something that there's more than one person to replace it?
We could definitely consider that. I personally would stay with Byron Jackson. They're the best of the best, and they're, and you pay a premium for them, but they last much better than the Sunstars and the, I shouldn't say that. I don't like to talk ill about competitors, but in my experience, they last much better than the Sunstar, the Hitaches, and those brands.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, over the time that I've been on the city council and the pump problems that we've had with sand issues and other problems we've had with them, the life of these pumps, compared to what other things that I think we had a comparison one time that we went through, these almost always get to the furthest end of the seven-to-10-year lifespan on them. And they are the premium pump, they are the better pump, but we don't have the downtime, we don't have to pull them in the middle of their lifecycle and rebuild them. So I think that, you know, the experience that we've had here at the city is they are the better pump, and unfortunately, there's only one or two places in the country that do it, and they happen to be right next door here, so they're local. I feel like it's the right thing to do because we've used these, and they tend to last as long as they can last for us. So, and they're very reliable.
If I can add one more thing, Lane just did two other wells for us, well six and well eight in 2018, and just finished up well eight this early of 2019. This year, they did a phenomenal job, and they actually warranted some work that they could have argued with us a little bit. When they were separating the pump from the motor at well eight, they actually broke the Mercury Seal, and when that happens, the motor's junk. They actually, they bought us a whole new motor at $50,000, their cost. They probably could have argued that a little bit, saying it's the, and most competitors, I think, would. They didn't argue it. They bit the bullet, they got us a whole new motor for $50,000.
Jeremy, is well seven, is that a deep well?
Well seven is a shallow well. Yes. Six, seven, and eight are shallow.
Anybody else? Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Chancic, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Jeremy. Yeah.
Thank you, Jeremy. All right, for the change in the agenda, we're gonna move on then to item 11, which is the discussion on the video gaming ordinance, advice to place moratorium on future licenses. Lauren Newman is our city administrator. Are you gonna start with that, or what's this all about?
Well, I had a handout for you today that you have in front of you, and that is a report from the Illinois Gaming Commission. And it's just the statistics for the city of Batavia from the time period of January 2018 through December 2018, showing the different entities that have a license to have video gaming machines in their establishments, the wagering activity over that time period, the video gaming terminal income, and then that last column is the video gaming terminal tax distribution. The first showing the entire tax that gets paid to the state of Illinois, and then the state takes a share and the municipality gets a share. In the city of Batavia, the 30% tax on the VGT income was $301,088, and the municipal share of that was $50,181.41. I believe that while this report shows that there are seven establishment that have video gaming terminals, we believe that there are only six. We believe that one establishment has had their video gaming terminals removed. So at this point, there are six establishments, much the same as for cigarettes and for alcohol. The police department, from time to time, does checks on whether they are abiding by the policies established in the ordinance. And over the roughly year-and-a-half time period, two-year time period that we have had the ordinance in place, only one establishment failed one sting. So, that's all I--
So, is this, what's the discussion about?
So this is-- Mark brought it up. Yeah, this was, I mentioned this last week, that I was interested. This happened before I started on council, and I know that had I been on council at the time, I would have voted no against having the video gambling in Batavia. I think mainly, I just don't think it's something that I want in our town, and I know when I drive by, especially you drive down Wilson, and you see a couple establishments and the big signs, 25% of our window is the ordinance that they can cover up and say, hey, video poker. And it's just not something that I necessarily wanna have more of in our town. I'm not, initially, my thought was, let's just rip them out. I hate it. Until I saw that that's $700,000 split between the people that place them there and the owners of those establishments. So I'd feel uncomfortable taking $350,000 away from business owners in our community. But I don't know that we need to continue to license these, and ultimately, what I would like to do is stop, or put a moratorium on it, and if another one of these drops off, then we keep on lowering that down until we get down to zero. That would be my wish out of this. $50,000 is not something that I think that this is worth. That's all we're getting out of this, and that's kind of my thought process on this.
And I second him on that, in asking for a discussion on this. Looking at these numbers, you know, when Mark and I first started talking about it, he brought up the initial figure that's close to $13 million. It's, you know, played into those machines, and I just, I have a problem with a governing body collecting taxes on citizens' losses, so to say. I have a fundamental problem with that. You know, same with the lottery, I guess, but it's, you know, it's a, for that amount of revenue, the, I don't think it's just a, I'm not comfortable with, just as Mark said, that being, you know, that being visible, and it's not what our community's about.
Dave?
Lucy?
How is this different than collecting tax on cigarettes?
Um, how is this different than collecting tax on cigarettes and, um, alcohol in our town? I mean, when I actually had a call today, a woman was concerned, she walked into a gas station, and there was a big bin of hard, small containers of hard alcohol right at the entryway, and then right behind the counter, there's a lot of alcohol, and as you drive around Wilson Street, there's a huge sign, big red sign that says tobacco and liquor or something like that. It's right there, and, you know, the health ramifications, um, to our youth by having this sort of thing so accessible is huge, and to me, that's a lot greater cost than, you know, a few million dollars on gambling. I was surprised that the sales tax to Batavia was this high. I'm kind of impressed, and, you know, we want to, um, we wanna hire more people, we want to take care of our stormwater, we have, we wanna put more sidewalks in, but we don't want to collect fees, we don't wanna raise taxes, we don't want to have, you know, things like video game, um, gaming and, you know, other things, or we don't wanna increase taxes, and I, you know, we can't have it both ways, we need revenues to do what we wanna do. So, you know, I, I don't see, to me, I don't find video gaming, gaming any worse than, well, less worse than tobacco that's getting to our youth and alcohol.
Susan?
Um, when it comes right down to it, you know, I don't drink, and, and I don't smoke, um, I don't get tattoos. These are all things that could go away and I wouldn't miss them, but the thing is that there is a part, portion of our population, obviously, that, and not even just Batavians, that, that played twelve million dollars worth of gambling in our town. So, as Lucy said, it's a revenue source. I can't, I can't put my value system on other people and how they, what they choose to do recreationally. That's, you know, when it comes to licensing marijuana, I will be the first person who would speak out against it, but again, it's my value system, and I can't, as much as I would like to, as many times as Dan has told me, I can't.
Yeah.
Um, I can't impose my value system on other people, and tha- that's why I've supported this. Business owners came in to us, they said they needed this source of revenue, that's why they were asking us to put, um, machines in their businesses. We talked about this for several meetings, we had opponents to video gambling come in and talk to us about why it was a bad idea, we had business owners come in and talk to us about why it was a good idea for their bottom line, and that's why the council voted the way they did. And I, I don't think, I mean, this has been in place for a couple of years now, and I have not seen a plethora of, like, there's not every other business on Wilson Street with a ga- a video gambling sign in their window, so I'm actually kinda pleased at how this has been kind of self-regulating, that it hasn't turned into, um, as the mayor talks about Susie Slots or whatever the places are in the small towns around us, those types of places haven't approached us about changing our laws and the way that we do this, so I'm happy with how it is. But again, um, you know, it all comes down to, you know, imposing your own value system on other people, which is something that we're not really here to do.
Mike?
When was the last application we received for video gambling, where somebody wanted a machine?
If you count the fact that we do have one, uh, restaurant right now that has an application in process, um, I'm trying to remember who would be the most recent one prior to that.
So.
Uh, would probably be Denny's more than a year ago.
Okay.
Rosati's?
Rosati's.
Uh, Rosati's.
About the same time.
Denny's has video?
You know, it, perhaps Denny's hasn't applied yet, but they did get a liquor license and let us know that that's, and that's why they built that separate room on the side of their establishment, so that it would be easy for them to coordinate off from the rest of the restaurant.
I think it would be tough for me to take and put these names to which businesses have the actual gaming unit.
Except Speedway.
Yeah, Speedway.
Cross town.
Yeah, that, those are the two that are, the rest of them, I don't know if I could name the businesses that they're in.
The, the other, um, point that I forgot to make is that currently, it's a conditional use, so each establishment has to be approved in order to, um, have that use there.
Eli? Mike, what you done?
You know, I wasn't finished, but I'm in support of keeping the video gambling, 'cause I agree that if a business wants it and they wanna source of revenue, I don't see anything wrong with this. I don't think we've went haywire with this either, I mean, six applications or six people doing video gambling through the course of two and a half years, I don't, I just don't see the influx of everybody wanting video gambling to where it's all over our town. So I'm perfectly comfortable where it's at right now.
Eli?
So, just to be clear, the moratorium that, that we're discussing here as it's being brought up, it's not to take away the thirty-five licenses from the businesses as they have them today, it's putting a cap on it.
Correct.
Okay, and, 'cause, I mean, I absolutely agree, I don't wanna take from any business that has now had this for the two years, it's, I do remember this got voted on, like, literally a month before I came on board.
Right.
Um, so I was there for the, the amendment to it, but I wasn't there for the original vote. Um, I wouldn't wanna take the hundred thousand dollars of, of, you know, then taxable income, you know, et cetera, away from a business, um, but I don't know that I would wanna see it grow either in terms of the number of machines, um, that are out there in the community, but I'm, I'm glad to hear that it does seem to have kinda stabilized. So, um, if we're talking about putting a cap on, not taking it away, um, I guess I could support that, um, sunsetting it, so to say, that's again my preference, but, um, I, I guess it would depend on how it's written, so.
So a sunset and a cap would be two different things.
Right, two different things.
I think you'd have to be kinda cautious, I mean, I, I supported this when it was brought up, and one of the reasons why I supported it was because the business owners were asking for it. Um, and I know you're not saying take it away from the existing ones, but I think there's other business owners that may be wishing to do it, um, because they're looking at it, maybe there's one restaurant, I don't know, but maybe there's one restaurant that Laura's referring to, is looking at the source of income that they project that it's gonna bring in, in their business model, when they're talking about locating in town. You know, they've got a mortgage to make. I can tell you that the Moose people down there have told me that if it wasn't for those games, they, they don't know what they'd be doing right now. They, they wouldn't have the money, they're scraping every month when they try to figure out how they're gonna fix their air conditioner when it goes out, and if it wasn't for these games, they, they don't know what they'd be doing, and I think the same would be said for the VFW. But, um, I, I think to, to try to say it's okay for these businesses to have it, but we're not gonna let new ones have it, now you're starting a whole new thing here where, you know, it'd be kinda like saying you can sell liquor if you wanna open a liquor store, but we don't want you to sell cigarettes because we don't like that anymore, but the other ones down the street, they can sell cigarettes.
It kinda puts it at an unfair advantage.
Yeah, yeah.
Dave? Alan?
Um, I guess one of the things that I think about this is, this is not just a simple, we don't like this, very shortly, we're gonna be faced with another decision, and then another one after that, when the state approves marijuana, and when the state approves sports bets, sports gaming. You're, you're, we're gonna have these same questions back before us on those, and I think the way we handled this was very well, we did put some restrictions on it, we did put some, you know, to me, somewhat restrictive, um, things about location, you know, how you can put it in the windows, how you can advertise it, the things we've, we've put up there, which I think have kinda held it in check. Um, and it doesn't allow for somebody to go in and rent a space and a building and just throw up a sign in the window, and that's all they have. So I think that same thing is gonna be back before the city council again very shortly, um, with a little bit different ramifications, because I think the other ones are, you look at the money that's on this sheet here, and this pales in comparison to what's coming. Um, so I think that that's something that we have to think about, as this kinda has a level playing field as it is, if we put any kinda restriction on it as far as how many more licenses will allow, I think that almost puts us into legal trouble. Uh, really doing that may be something we have to ask our council about before we make a decision or even pursue that, because I don't wanna get us in that situation where the first thing we have to deal with is somebody suing us over it.
Dan?
I guess I would start this by saying I recognize on some level I am a bit of a hypocrite, because I do, uh, I do gamble.
Me too.
Oh, you do? Okay. Now, I, I have to get in a car though, and I, as I said this when we first spoke about this, I have to get in the car, I need to drive to Aurora, I need to drive to Elgin, to do my gambling. I had dinner tonight at Crosstown, I did not gamble there, it's not my particular, I don't feel like I'm good at this particular game, so I don't play it. But I remember these discussions that we had, and I was originally a no on this because all the experts told us that this was the, the crack of the gambling world, that this was the really addictive bad stuff. Thank you for these numbers, I had no idea that there was more, almost thirteen million dollars being played in our community on such a, a sh- small number of machines. One and a half million dollars played across the street from the Batavia Apartments, I had no idea, um, that these were the kinda numbers that we were dealing with, and fifty thousand dollars as our take, I recognize that that is real money for the city of Batavia, um, but recognizing that this is the worst of the worst of the, of the gambling, uh, that's out there, taking this money from people in our community makes me very, very uncomfortable. I would support a moratorium, um, I, we've done moratoriums on banks before, we've done moratoriums on all the kinds of, of things, no one's gonna sue us, I mean, anybody with twenty-five dollars can file a lawsuit, I suppose, but, um, when we approved this, when we approved Denny's, I didn't, I didn't picture video gaming at the Denny's, so.
Sure, that was.
This is heading in the wrong direction, is all I'm saying.
That was discussed at that time when they placed the licenses, because our ordinance requires you to have liquor.
I understand that, but that's not where my head was, I can't picture a Denny's with these things, I, that's just, that's not what I was picturing, and I just feel like, I don't have a problem with people that are currently doing it, if that is your business model and that is what it takes for you to stay in business, with all due respect, I'm sorry, um, it's not for me, uh, and I, I legitimately regret my vote on this, I do, and so if it were up to me, I would, uh.
Hypocrite.
I am a hypocrite, I recognize that, totally, and I still smoke, too, so, um, I would, I would definitely support a moratorium on it, 'cause we've, um, this is too much for me, it just makes me uncomfortable.
Yeah, I, I gotta agree with Dan on this one, I wasn't, I, I didn't support it the first time around for a lot of the reasons that have been stated, uh, you know, among others, one, I just don't like how it looks in town, it doesn't, doesn't feel like Batavia to me to have neon gambling signs up and down the, the street, and, you know, I don't, I don't think it's a particularly great thing to have that much money being sucked out of the community. Um, and my other issue was, you know, it's, this is all well and good for the game machine operators in the state, and we take on the burden of regulating it and doing all this for, you know, what out of these numbers is a relatively paltry sum for taking on that burden. Um, and so, yeah, I, that was one of my biggest issues was, even if we're gonna have it, it needed to be more equitable, and it just, it wasn't for what we're being asked to take on and the repercussions for the community. So I would absolutely support putting a cap on it.
So, um, looking at it from a different perspective, being against the initial, for the very reasons, we were hearing a lot of, I don't see it from people in the neighbors that saying, I just don't see it in our town, I don't see it, we're very concerned about the proliferation, that it's gonna end up everywhere, and while it maybe might be in, be under consideration for different spots than you anticipated, I think it was already there, so that influenced my initial vote as to why I said no to it. However, what did we also do to kind of split the baby and try to figure that out under home rule? We took it from the twenty-five dollar fee, and we raised it to the thousand, is not what we're actually talking about, maybe we ought to reevaluate the fees on it instead, because the fees may add that natural deterrence for overproliferation, while still also respecting peoples, you might, we might not like these numbers, but there are a lot of things that all kinds of people do that you might not like, so we have to separate what we don't like that is legal, and regulate it in a way so that you don't have unfettered, unregulated, uh, exponential spread while still allowing it. And maybe the, the way to kind of self-impose the limits on it is to put the, the fee under home rule is going to be X. You still have a choice to pay that or not, you're gonna be making a lot of money, figure out what you wanna do, and still allow for that choice for people that are going to. Um, what that dollar amount is, I don't know, but I, I can see it probably going from twenty-five to a thousand, might have deterred from where it would have been. Everywhere is what people were thinking, to raise it for a little bit more, raise it so that it is a little more worthwhile to the city to cover those costs that, for the policing, um, to offset those, and, and make it equitable for everybody as much as you can, knowing that there's a diehard side that says yes, and there's a diehard that side that says no. Look for the compromise and figure it out.
Dave? Oh, sorry.
Um, so, I guess Lucy had answered your question, I don't think it is any different than smoking or drinking, I think that there's a lot of, we probably have an overabundance of liquor stores in town, to be honest with you, I mean, it's, it's amazing, I, if you stop and think about how many there are, um, and I'm not thrilled about certain signs that you see around town either, I just think it, it devalues our town in some ways, um, and Susan, to the values thing, putting our values, I mean, we don't have a gentleman's club in town, and that's a value, I'm sure that, um, was decided a long time ago to keep that out of our ordinances. We make value judgments when we decide to zone neighborhoods in, in one way with the, up on Main Street, when we said, well, yep, let's try, let's move some of these things out of that, because we don't wanna have certain businesses running in that district. So we change things because of the values of our neighbors and our values here. So we do impose our values on the citizens, if you wanna look at it that way, as imposing values, but I really don't think of it that way, I think it's just a matter of how we want our town to be perceived. You drive to some of these other towns, and they've chosen that they don't want their town to be perceived that way, so they don't allow them.
Susan?
Um, I would, this, this conversation in some ways seems slightly hypocritical, and the reason I say that is we have numbers in front of us for gambling. How much money is spent in our town every year on alcohol? How much money is spent on our town every year on tobacco products? But because those are things that are more mainstream, we choose to just ignore that and go, oh my gosh, look at how much money is coming right across the street from the Batavia Apartments, where it could be truck drivers going up and down Kirk Road who are stopping too, but we choose to say this is coming from the apartments. So, when we look at these things, did I, would I have ever thought I wanted to live in a town with a tattoo parlor on the main street of town? Absolutely not, that is so far afield of what I ever thought I would want in our town, but it came to a vote, and the vote was yes, it's an arts community, if they wanna be on the main street of our town, that's what should happen. So when it comes to this, I mean, I, I remember when Wheaton was a dry community, and everybody was shocked, oh my gosh, how could Wheaton be a dry community, it's right so close to Chicago, what, what the heck are those people thinking? Well, now that's how I feel about this, it's like, um, there will always be people who will gamble. When we had this discussion initially, the thing was, is that restaurants, if they were gonna put in, um, video machines, some people on the council said, oh my gosh, I would never take my kids to a place where there's gambling on the present, and, in the building. And so, the point we made was, okay, fine, don't eat there, you know, you get to make that choice, you, you spend money how you want to, you can either eat there or not eat there, that's up to you, but that was how that vote came about, about, you know, it was kind of like, we aren't imposing that on anyone, so if you don't like the way the signs look, I, I totally get it, but it hasn't proliferated to the point where it's everywhere. There are so many more places now that sell alcohol in town than when I got on the council, it was very limited number, the mayor, like, never gave out a liquor license to anyone, and now it's gone into Walgreens, it's gone into the gas stations, all the places that we never thought it would be, it, it's, times change, and this to me has never seemed like it's a horrible thing. I, I guess, I guess when I, when I think about the big picture of how much money is being spent on the other vices, this is small potatoes compared to those, so, just my point.
It'll be real small potatoes when marijuana comes out.
Oh my gosh.
Sports bet.
It'll be extremely.
And sports betting.
Both of those.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yeah, let me jump in here, I, uh, as many of you will remember, I was not a big fan of this from the very beginning, and I was the one that helped come up with the idea that we should put some price on the cost of the machines and go after the provider of the machines, as well as the guy who was putting them in town, and, uh, well, after we did that, we received a number of calls from other cities. we received a number of calls from other cities wanting copies of our ordinance about how much money we were charging for the machines. And so the machines have been a revenue source for us. Now, that being said, and it's two things that have just been said, first by Alderman Callahan, and Marty, I really can agree with everything you've just said, that, you know, that the history is what it is. And, you know, it has been here, it has been received. And I agree with what Alderman Stark has just also said, that, you know, we've seen changing times here, very, very dramatically and drastically. I will share with you that when gambling first came to Kane County, we were one of the places that was really highlighted, because we had the river, and the original gambling casinos in Illinois all had to be built on the water. And so Joliet, Aurora, and Elgin were the three towns that got the gambling casinos. And so I was at a meeting shortly after it was all, this little deal was put together. And some of those folks in the room said, "Well, there's some secrets to gambling in Chicagoland area, and there's more than one reason why we want to put these, you know, this thing on the water's not gonna last long." And it didn't. I mean, now we have them in Displanes on a pond or something up there. But what was pointed out to me, there was a kind of, some folks that go out and track who the gamblers are. And it was pointed out that specifically the Tri-Cities has a lot of people that are constituents who live in town who are active gamblers. We have a pretty high number. And the other thing that is very, very common, and I've heard this from my friends at the city of Aurora on several occasions, is that it used to be very over-demanding on the Aurora Casino, that they had to have everybody to work on the first through the tenth of the month, predicated on what used to be the arrival of the social security check at the beginning of the month, because there was this huge base of customers that came from the social security world. And that, so now I have subsequently been told that if you look at who the real gamblers are, there is a huge percentage of people who are elderly or, you know, seventy or above, my age, who are out there gambling with great regularity. And that's why these, number one, the casinos first came here and surrounded us, and that's why they also came down in places like Joliet. And if you looked at where they put them, they put them out in the hinterlands of Joliet, so that they'd be near some of the more affluent suburbs, places like Frankfurt, New Lenox, and whatever have you. And the same thing happened up in Elgin to some degree, too, that it was all predicated on who was going to be coming in there and where the money and the gamblers were coming from. So, you know, whether we like it or not like it, I think it's the reality of the community, that we do have a number of people, either in Batavia or very close by, that want to come in and use these machines. And if we shut the door on it, they'll just go down the street to the next town where they can find it, and they'll just gamble. I mean, it's just the way it is. So I, you know, I'm kind of feeling like I'm beating my head against the wall here as the earlier opponent to this, because at the end of the day, it's here, it's not going away. And I would, I kind of subscribe to what Alderman Malley and Alderman Irvin have said. I share some of their sentiments. But the harsh realities of it are, we could stop it or try to stop it, but everybody's still gonna do it. And we would be the lesser community from the perspective that we have the chance to make some money here, and we aren't. In a time when government is not seemingly knowing where it's going from a financial perspective, I'm really reluctant to shut down anything that's generating money to us on a regular basis. And this money does seem to grow, this gambling money does seem to grow, specifically when we brought in Speedway out there. That was a huge influx of new money in there. Now, that one, from what I go out there and get my gas, and what I see happening there is, a lot of that gambling seems to be coming from the east side of the building, i.e. all the truckers who pull in there at the truck stops. And they seem to park their truck over there, and then they come in and take a break and play with the machines with some great degree of intensity. So it is what it is. I don't think there's that many people coming across the street, quite honestly, from the Batavia Apartments to gamble. They may come over there to get a bag of chips and a cheeseburger or whatever they're making in there, but I don't know how many of them are gambling. But there certainly is a lot of people coming down Kirk Road in sixteen, eighteen-wheel trucks that come in there and gamble. So just some observations, and I'm not saying I'm against it, or I'm saying I'm for it, but it's here, and I think we, whatever we do, we have to work out some way to live with it. And I think initially, we did a great job of that, because, boy, a bunch of towns came in here and grabbed our ordinance and looked at our fee schedule on how to charge for these machines. And I would suggest that when the marijuana moment arrives, we're gonna have some similar discussions about what we can do to ante up the city's share of the marijuana costs, because that's gonna be a burden on us. As I think I've shared with you, Mayor Rogina and I sent a letter to all of our state representatives recently, in which we cited the fact that last year in the Tri-City ambulance, now there's HIPAA laws, so we can't get too specific, but we can tell you that there were seven hundred and eighty calls between Batavidge and even St. Charles that had some form of drug in the background of that call. And that's, if you do the math, and that averages out to two a day in Batavidge and even St. Charles. Now, I can imagine that number's gonna take off and significantly increase when you put marijuana on the street. And I'm specifically concerned very highly about the age of this. And Rogina and I put it in our letter, "Boy, you better make it twenty-one if you're gonna start selling this," because I think we have a lot of problems with our youth in this town getting their hands on this stuff. And this vaping thing, as Chief Yule will tell you, is of great concern to the Batavia Police Department, myself. So there's some stuff we gotta be, stay on top of. And I thank every one of you who wants to show your concern and opposition to this, because this shouldn't come in here lightly, and we shouldn't roll over and say, "Well, it's here. Let's just roll with it." But we really need to keep an eye on what is going on here with this stuff.
Dave?
Mike?
So, I agree with you, Mayor. I like what Marty had to say. I voted against it on the last vote, because my concern was, was the people who were going to gamble, the people who could ill afford to gamble. And I don't know what the data is on that. These people, are they the ones who are gambling? I find it hard to believe that, you know, it's almost five million dollars at Speedway, that money is generated from the Batavia Apartments. You know, so I'd have to think it's probably, as you say, Mayor, you know, the trucks going up and down, the over-the-road trucks going up and down, you know, stopping at Speedway for the night to shower, to whatever they have for facilities, and it's an evening's entertainment. So I don't know how I feel about it yet, but I do have concerns about, you know, the people in our town who are less fortunate than others. And so I don't know how I'll go on this yet, but I'd like to see some of the data on that, if there's any out there.
I don't know if we can pull the data out or not. I will tell you that I was told that the gambling arrival in Illinois was one of the most highly technically studied processes that we've ever brought into the state, specifically where we put these gambling casinos. And where the three of them arrived were out here in Joliet, Aurora, and Elgin. And that wasn't just because they were nice towns. That was because the numbers around them indicated that there would be a lot of gamblers. And I'm told now that the fourth one, which is up in Displanes, on the creek or whatever it is up there, that one is there because you've got it near one specific thing, and that's O'Hare Airport. And you can run a shuttle from that casino over to O'Hare, when you've got all these people laying over for four and five, six hours. It's a place to go, and there's a lot of money made at that casino because of that. So there's all this kind of out-of-the-way stuff that you don't know of, that's why things are happening in this arena. And, you know, it's kind of a guarded secret by those who are throwing their money into this, what the real reasons are that they're spending it. But there are real reasons, and it's not just here because this was an easy spot to put it in, Elgin, Aurora, and Joliet. It's here because there was a guarantee, or they could see where the business was gonna come from and where the people were gonna spend the money. And they have, and there's been a lot of money made by everybody in this thing.
Yep. Mike, thank you for what you said there. The people at least can at least afford it. It is an absolutely regressive tax that's levied in place. Maybe that five million didn't come out of Batavia Apartments, but I assure you, there's a good chunk of that came out of there, and there are a lot of children suffering because of that. And it goes to the heart of the, it is a, for the city to profit off the hardship of its citizens, I just have a big problem with.
But we are, in other ways.
I understand that.
Sir, my two cents. And I voted against this, for a number of reasons. The value of mine, and maybe that, there are different things. I drink alcohol, but I don't gamble. But I also did hear from my constituents, probably more than almost any other topic than since I've been on the council. I mean, it was large. So that was a big part of my consideration, was that. Now, where we are now, Mike, I agree. I'd love to see data, if we can get it. I'd love to see it, because I do agree with you. It's a recessive tax. It is. But I'm split as a business owner. I get it. You know, I get, you're trying to maximize your profits. So I think that's, for me, I need to see more. I'm not opposed to a moratorium, but I'd like to, I think we need to talk about it some more.
If I could, I'd just like to point out that a moratorium is really not necessary. When something is a conditional use, you have the ability each and every application to say, "Nope, not interested in having another one." So putting a moratorium into the ordinance is not something that's necessary. Now, maybe it is necessary if it's something that you want to do as a values statement.
Lucy?
Do we know whether these establishments, the people that come in and gambling, in our gambling, are there to buy other services? Are the gambling machines bringing people in, and then are they buying food and drink and that sort of thing? Or are they there...
I would be happy to invite some of them to a future meeting, because maybe hearing what their experience is with it, and, you know, what impact it has had on their business is an important part of the decision.
Okay. Because they could be buying, maybe they're coming in just to eat and then gamble because it's there, or maybe they're being brought in because of the gambling machines. And I think that makes a difference.
Laura, the only question I would have on, yes, we could say it's conditional use, but that could be the, that's where I could see a lawsuit happening, is that one, one of these places closes down, somebody comes in, and then we say, "Oh, no, sorry, we don't want to give you one." And they're like, "Wait, I'm doing the exact same business as the person before me." And does that set us up for a lawsuit? It would be the only thing I'd be concerned about.
You know, I'd be happy to check on that, but I would think no on the basis that as long as you said, "We're interested in having fewer of these establishments, so we're not going to give you another, we're not going to approve that conditional use," that that would be a legal justification for not approving.
Would it be worthwhile? I mean, as you say, we were only gonna issue X licenses, or, you know, whatever, you know, for that. And so if, let's say, someone gets out of the business, those are available, right? Maybe that's what it is. Just a thought.
Anybody from the public want to speak on this?
Up here.
Bob Hanson, owner of Funway. A couple of years back, I sent you all a letter about this, and I was in favor of this for a lot of business owner friends. Not particularly down at Funway at that time. We have thought about this over the last couple of years. Obviously, I've been busy with another project. But just like any other business or community, we're looking at our budget, we're looking at our numbers every year. And the additional revenue from these games, it's helping out a lot of businesses in town. There are a couple owners that have told me they wouldn't be in business if it wasn't for these games right now. Another fellow down in North Aurora, who used to be in town, says the same thing down there. So, Scott, you know who I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Our biggest hurdle over the next five years will be the minimum wage increase, which will really, I don't know if I would have done this project, to be honest with you, because we are labor-intensive. It's gonna be a struggle. So we will be looking for additional sources of revenue. This is one that I've thought about. If I can find the right location and put it in an area out of sight for the adults only, it's additional revenue to keep us going. That's basically my point. Thank you.
Okay. A lot of different opinions here.
We're not acting on anything?
No, we can't act on it. We don't have anything in front of us to act on. This discussion. So I guess, is there anything anybody wants Laura to do for a future discussion, or are we just all gonna keep considering this? Dan?
Well, it just makes sense to take a straw poll. It's obviously non-binding, but just to take our temperature, to see if we want to make a policy statement on it. I understand that a conditional use is the moratorium, but if we made a policy statement on it, it would be sort of directing what it is that we do.
I think before you do a straw poll, you should maybe try to get more information that's been asked about what kind of data, you know, our people...
If it's literally just two of us that are interested, though, then I say, "Don't waste the staff time."
True.
Yeah.
How could you pull data like that?
Yeah, I'm not sure they know.
If I go in and put a twenty-dollar bill, how would they know if I live in Batavia or Geneva or...
Some of the data will be hard to get.
Aurora.
That's true.
But some of it might be clear. Maybe they know the truckers are the ones gambling, and maybe they don't.
But how would you know? It would be speculative.
How would you know where the trucker is from?
Exactly. If you own a cross-town pub, how would you know?
I bet they have an idea of who's sitting in their facility.
Before we leave this discussion, I want to make one point here, is if we look at the numbers that were on the data that we got, the real numbers is the net wagering activity. I mean, the money that actually doesn't leave with the people when they walk out the door is a million dollars.
Seven percent.
Of it. So, you know, out of the twelve million that was there, that was wagered, eleven-six was returned to them. You know, again, proving that gambling is not a wise investment. The thing, I think, now, I don't know how we come to the decision on, a judgment on it, whether we want to change it or whether we want to leave it as it is. I don't know what our true costs are as the city, what kind of time and what kind of money we can quantify the city staff, police department, everybody has spent on it. This number, all the way to the right on the tax distribution, is just the money that comes in from the actual gaming. It's not the fees that are charged for each one of the, or there's thirty-five machines that are there. So there's thirty-five grand more that come in. So that's real money. I mean, that's almost, we're almost approaching...
Is it an annual?
Yes.
Yeah. We're almost approaching an employee in total money that we're bringing on in that with, you know, without knowing what our costs are. That, to me, is pretty simple. And when I think about the fact of what's coming real soon, that may be one of the things that we have to start looking at when we set up our budgets, is the reality of the licenses that we have and the things that we allow. And they are choices that people themselves have to make, just like smoking, just like drinking, just like tattoos, anything else, that people make their own decisions. And the reality is, if they're making those decisions, and it's something that we make money off of as a revenue stream for the city, I don't know how we ignore those. I mean, I don't have a problem trying to control them or keep them in check to where we think that they fit into our community. But to ignore those or say no to them, I think is somewhat irresponsible for us and what we're charged to do.
Yeah, and that's why I think along the lines of, I would rather control it with a fee. That's gonna be naturally the way to do it. And it would be more in line with the way that we've made decisions on liquor sales tax. And we've made those decisions to, we know that it's legal. It might not be something that you may or may not want, like Susan doesn't like tattoos, but this place is always full, and I've had to go to North Aurora to get my tattoos.
Of course. So why don't we straw poll that, then?
Well, no, I'm really confused on what to do with this, Dan, because I think, what are we straw poll? Do we straw poll, do we want to ban it completely?
Yeah, we're straw-polling with a...
Or do we want to have discussion about what are we gonna do with our fees? Or do we want to have discussion about, are we gonna limit how many? Or do we just want to straw poll on, do we want to continue to have discussion about this? I mean, really, and that, maybe that's the right thing to do. Just, do we want to continue to have discussion about this? And if so, then I think that there ought to be a time set that we all should email Laura with what our concerns are, that we think are maybe some things that could be definitively put down on a piece of paper for true consideration. And if there's things that we can get... And if there's things that we can get data out of through their work, then that could be what we continue to discuss. Otherwise, the straw poll would be to not have any more consideration of it whatsoever. I don't know.
That's why I said take our temperature. If only a couple, two, three of us want to do it, then let's drop it. I don't want to waste the staff time on it, but if, my mind's been changed. I'm not necessarily in favor of just a moratorium. I think raising the fee makes a ton of sense because it will chase away quite a few more people. I just don't know whether it's doubling or tripling or what that fee is. That's not our job.
But raising fees, in my opinion, what is that going to? The argument's been made that this is a great resource, and you're trying to chase away a future resource by raising fees.
It's a judgment call on whether or not we're saying 35 of these machines in Batavia are enough, and whether or not we're going to make $70,000 by charging $2,000 instead per year. That could be a judgment call, too, because maybe 35 is the number that this market can support until we get another gas station at a major intersection where they want to put more machines. I don't think doubling the fee to 2,000 is outrageous, especially some of what these guys are taking, but that's a great discussion to have later.
And maybe that's not part of a separate discussion. Maybe that goes to the budgeting, as they go into budgeting and looking, we had talked about thinking about creative ways to have different types. Maybe they let Peggy do the research on it and figure out that this is an area where we have room. We're leaving money on the table, so we should be considering that as a fee. And that is part of the budget process, and then it's not as heated and contentious on just the issue. We focus on, is it worthwhile from a monetary point of view?
But wouldn't it be interesting to know, backing out, how much money the city derives from taxes in alcohol? And how much money the city derives from taxes in tobacco products? Because if we're going to single out one vice, why not pick the one that brings us the most money and is the most detrimental to the health of the community? Because, I mean, and that's where the value decisions come in. You know, that's where I have a hard time with this. So, but I'd love to know those numbers before we say, let's throw the baby out with the bathwater. Okay, let's look at these other things and see how much money. When you talk about we're taxing the people who can least afford it, well, a package of cigarettes is not cheap. And, you know, it's probably the equivalent in a week to what somebody puts into a slot machine. So how do you pick which vice is the worst one?
So am I hearing that we would like to table the discussion regarding video gaming until closer to the budget time and examine the revenues from the video gaming terminals in conjunction with the other types of syntax that exist?
Syntax, that's good, I like that.
I don't think I want to wait that long, personally. I mean, I think we can have a judgment on whether or not we want to put a moratorium on this to create a hard cap that then there is no decision-making after that. We just say, nope, no more, we're at seven and that's all we have.
So maybe that's, we should say, do we want to take a vote on a moratorium or do we want to wait?
And I think that's the straw poll that Dan is asking for.
But we have a lot of restaurants in play right now. And so if any of those restaurants are specifically moving into Batavia because in addition to food sales, they can also put in gaming, then is that unfair to those new businesses who think that they have an opportunity to make extra money by saying, we're going to cap it now? And, oh, well, Jenny's, I'm sorry, you didn't like do it fast enough? So I guess maybe you might want to move down the road to a town that does allow it.
They should read our ordinance. They're not entitled to a license right now as it is.
I understand it's all conditional, but if it's out there that this business, if Crotown right now, today, because they were lucky enough to get in before a moratorium, can have video gambling, but a burger place that goes in down the road can't, that's an unfair advantage to a restaurant business that's already been here.
You know what? The straw poll thing is, it's just a redundancy, okay? It's, we already have it with just being, we select who we want in, okay? And so I say, let's just call it. I mean, I don't, we don't, I'm not going to support the moratorium. I'm not supporting that. To me, it's just too much on top of something. Uncle, I think we've, I'm not going to support that. I'm going to support leaving it as it is and done with it. If people want to come in, Marty had a great idea, we up the fees. We don't know what we're going to up the fees. We up the fees at the budget time to see what we need, because it is going into the city, and the city is not spending it outside the city. The people putting into it, although it's recessive tax, as you say, the money is still going back into the quality of life for the people of Batavia. And so I just think we should just be done with it.
All right, so to try to get things off-center here, I'm going to propose, because I think some people want a straw poll. So I'm going to propose that, I'm going to make a straw poll here, that we table this discussion indefinitely with the opportunity to bring it up at budget time for future considerations. Does that make sense? In other words, we're not going to have any more discussion about this right now, but it can be brought back up at budget time for future consideration. Okay, so anybody in favor of that, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay. So that means it's tabled and can always be brought back up for future consideration.
It was a useful discussion. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on then to discussion on entry signs.
Okay, I just wanted to bring up some slides that I have of all the different entryway signage possibilities here, so that everybody who is following along at home can see. The city asked a local design company, Peterson Design, to provide us with some design samples to replace our entryway signage. As you recall, way back when, in May of 2016, the city had been looking at replacing its very old, I think it's nearly 40 years old, our entryway signage that we have right now. And there was a request for proposals for the signage. Lot of very different, very artistic renderings came back. And I think that it was difficult for it to decide upon any one of those. And it prompted the discussion of, should we engage in branding in order to determine what those signs should look like? That really hasn't revealed to us a new design for our signage. And so I asked Peterson Design if they would just come up with something that was a simple representation of both our history and our progress, both calling upon, you know, our amazing past that we've had, but then something where people could feel proud that they're looking at as they come into town, a sign that is representative of our community today. And so it was basically a riff on a few different elements that you see here. We wanted to have kind of a stately surround for the signage itself. We wanted the message to be simple. It appeared from the discussions surrounding branding that there really wasn't any aversion to our existing tagline of the city of energy, but we just needed a little bit of an update. So on these various slides, you will see a variation of the elements as to whether or not we use a limestone surround, the font that is used for the verbiage on the sign, a difference in a light background and dark letters versus a dark background and light letters. And then also, you'll see some of the later concepts incorporate a blue feature at the top of the sign to represent the fact that Batavia is a river community. So I'll show you briefly each of the 12 designs. It's concept B.
Are the, is the limestone supposed to be different colored?
The only one, I think, that is of a lighter color is this one. And initial feedback was that, and I've heard from several others, that this gives a bit of a washed-out appearance, that they, it's not very eye-catching, and it's not really the Batavia color of limestone, as one can see by the contrast from the slide and the wall. You can see that right there. So in this next version of it, you can see how it's more the natural colored limestone.
Potential or not?
Mm-hmm. And then, of course, this is it in the brick. You can see the contrast between the two different fonts. There appears to be a preference for limestone versus brick. There appears to be a preference for the more traditional font versus the Helvetica. And now we come to a sign that has the darker background and the lighter letters. There was a question, how would the darker background with the lighter letters would be more difficult to see at night if the signs were not lit? And so the last slide is a rendering of what the sign would look like lit. And this is the first time we see that element of what is meant to capture the river at the top. Some don't like that. Some say blue is Geneva's color. Others say, hey, that says you've come to another one of these river communities when you see that. So H was another one of the, H and B are probably our two top. I also received several votes. So I'd say B, H, and I were the ones that received the most votes of popularity. And there's what? The dark background with the light letters and the blue at the top, if we consider trying to design an element that was the lighted blue at the top. Would you like me to go back to any one of the designs?
One thing I'll say is, I went through this exercise with a church that I was involved with on the board. And in doing the sign, we had several people that were available to us at the time that worked within sign industry. And one of the things you have to really look at is the color combinations that you use on the sign being at opposite ends of the color spectrum or the light spectrum. So when you see that sign, it takes you a very short period of time to identify the letters that are on there, if they're, the contrast at each end. And the lighter lettering, even though you don't think that way, the lighter lettering by your brain and your eyes is perceived as easier to see, even at night, even in low light. So that's something that I think we should take into consideration, that when you look at that sign, whether or not it's lit, the letters being a lighter color are easier to interpret at night.
Compared to what we have now, this is great.
Yeah.
I totally get.
If it was in Geneva, blue would be better than what we have now, the whole sign.
No St. Charles brick, though.
Or St. Charles brick. Geneva blue and St. Charles brick would be better than what we have right now.
I like the Batavia on, was it B? I'll go to B.
B is my favorite.
Yeah, the letters are kerned a little bit better on that, on that one. But I also like.
And that again is the darker limestone.
Is there a way to just put the river right up the center of it with that design?
We could put a moat around it.
Because then it doesn't look like it's a Geneva sign with the blue.
How about a fountain coming out the top?
I believe you're running into the problems that you had before.
Yeah, I know.
Could women flash colors?
That's really nice.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
As I pointed to you before the meeting, I like, kind of like them all except the ones with the brick.
Yeah.
Personally, I kind of ranked them here. I got, I've got I as my number one, and H is my number two. But hearing what Alan said, it makes sense where the lighter colors draws your eye to it better than. But either, I mean, I could certainly be happy with either one, but I favored I.
That's, I was, H and I were my top two also. And I was, I was just trying to decide what was more visible. I think you make sense with that, Alan.
I agree with you, Tony.
And I like the one where Dave showed us illuminated, the blue river at the top illuminated. I thought that was kind of a neat touch. I mean, that would be very striking at night.
The only one that I heard is that maybe the blue, if it was more of a natural color, since everything's a natural color, that blue kind of sticks out.
It does.
And it makes it look a little more.
Cheesy.
Ni-yani.
Cheesy.
Holidayanish.
And our river is not that blue.
Well.
Kind of looks like it's green.
Too soon.
Good timing.
Real good timing.
You'd go a shade darker with the blue?
I'd go darker.
Is the note that you would go a shade darker with the blue?
I don't know.
But that was all I, that was the only thing that I had heard.
As long as it's not royal blue or Viking blue.
Water's supposed to be clear.
So where do you want to go from here?
If you like this design, then that is one of the first choices we make, that those are the elements. The next thing we have to look at is how many signs. And actually, maybe a precursor to that is whether you want man-made materials or the natural materials. And as I stated in my memo, we can get all of the six signs, existing signs, replaced within our budget if we use man-made materials. It's a standard in the industry. You'd need a keen eye to be able to detect that it's not man-made materials or that it is man-made materials in this type of sign. If we were talking about a sign that was in front of the building here that people were passing within a few feet of and able to touch, you'd probably want to go with a natural material. But in something that's by the side of the road that people are passing in a moving car, I've gone out to see a number of them. A couple of the North Aurora signs are man-made materials, and I think they look very quality. Dave's got that keen eye.
A good example of a man-made sign that looks good is the church that's across from the library. That's a man-made sign out in front of the church, and it looks really good. Yeah, Kevin Botterman told me that, that's his church, and so we talked about that.
Yeah, I'm going to refer to it right here, man-made or?
I don't know, how long does man-made last?
Yeah, what's the life cycle? Do they know what the, how long does it last?
So what the sign company is telling me is that the man-made materials are far easier to maintain. The natural materials will last longer, but you will be tuckpointing them more, and they will be more expensive to maintain into perpetuity. You know, it's limestone.
How do they hold up to salt?
Not well. As you can imagine, if this limestone were next to the street and getting salt sprayed on it.
Isn't that some of the thinking that we used when we did the forms for around the bridge?
Yes.
And that stuff works really well up here at.
Camin.
The intersection. We made those same decisions kind of along those lines, and we've never heard any complaints, and it does look really good.
Looks great.
I'd be more inclined for man-made, just for budget reasons also.
Laura, what design is the designer's favorite design? H.
And do you know why?
Because it's cool.
It's more expensive.
Because Alan brought out some good points about.
He did.
Yeah.
Sign people, how they, that people can see it.
And to see that one in the.
Yeah, I think that would.
Yeah, it might be neat to see if that one could be rendered in the lit background to see what that looks like.
I'll bring that back.
Can we see B again?
Kern the letters.
Really?
Does the designer like B?
I will die.
The A and the V?
I will die on.
Yes.
A and the Vs.
Absolutely. Like it is right there. That's good. Look at H.
The A and the V need to come out.
That's fine as it is. B is fine. Look at H.
I think the A and the V are in a weird.
No, they're fine.
Go to H. Were they too close?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Again, somebody that does that and looks at that stuff all the time.
Those are the kind of things you see.
I will die on that one.
So am I hearing that we'd like to see the nighttime version of H to contrast with I?
And it's not possible to have a nighttime version of B?
Probably is.
Click and a click and a click.
BH9.
And are we thinking that? And are we thinking that we would want to replace the six existing signs in our initial go-around? And then we can make a decision at budget time if we want to replace the two missing signs. We, at one time, had a entryway sign at Fabian and Randall. And we also had an entryway sign on South River Street. I'm not exactly sure where those went, but they don't exist today.
I'd say put all eight. I mean, they're entry signs. Put all eight.
If they weren't budgeted, that's the problem.
You could put it next year's budget.
Although, would it be cheaper to manufacture all the signs it was?
Would it be cheaper now to do a budget amendment, right?
Budget amendment. Laura, the only thing I'm concerned about with the man-made is, I mean, obviously, if you go with natural stone, we all know what kind of structure we're going to get. You're going to have a concrete foundation and you're going to have stone going up from there. With the man-made, we're going to have, I'm assuming, a concrete foundation with what going up from there? Is it going to be a metal frame that's going to have a fake stone facade put on it? So if that's what we're going to get...
Is it cinder block or something?
It would be a CMU block. It would be a CMU, I would think.
Do you think it'd be CMU?
They, you know, facade that, yeah.
What they referred informed, and this might be for the sign itself. No, that was the sign itself was going to be artificial stucco, right?
Artificial stone, but the base of it will be concrete, as Dave said.
Yes.
It would be cinder blocks, CMU blocks, that they would put the artificial stone to. Something has to carry the artificial stone. And that's what I would recommend.
That's why I'm bringing it up. We don't want...
We don't want steel studs holding it up, but I would.
Right.
Will it withstand an impact?
That would be much better than...
So will it withstand an impact?
What are your thoughts on lighting? Lighting, we were going to suggest that maybe just a few of the six initially should be lighted.
Why?
Yes. Big differentiation in the cost depending upon the location. Anywhere between $5,000 and $30,000, given the access to the electricity at a given location. But oftentimes, where there was an existing that was in the $30,000 range, the electric department suggested putting it on an opposite corner where electricity was available closer to it. That's why on page two, you'll see the, about 13 different, yeah, 13 different locations because there's some, the missing ones, as well as options that are suggested.
And I also question too, why would we put the sign on Randall Road at Main Street when our corporate limits are all the way down at Orchard Road?
Because it's there. We don't have to. I mean, we can move it down, certainly.
Those are the kinds of things I think that shouldn't be overlooked.
Right.
Joe Knapp, who's in the audience and is not saying anything, just sent me a message and said, would we consider thinking about solar energy to light these so that we're not using electricity?
My understanding is that the, we can definitely look into it. My understanding now, not being any expert, is that the solar technology is not yet there where it would properly illuminate that. And our worry is that when it says City of Energy, we can't have a blinking light on it.
This is true.
Excellent point. That's an excellent...
That would be another one where that Edison Mission Streetlight Generator would be a great thing to be there, too, to have one solar panel and one wind generator on each one.
Isn't there the gentleman, Gilberto, Sam Gilberto? He had, he had the lights to light up streetlights. And he had that little solar panel to light streetlights. And he's in the, Laura, look into that, please.
I will.
Because he is in, in the park there. So we should probably get ahold of him. I think I might have his number. Maybe you can get his number, Laura.
I think I know what company that you're talking about, the lighting company?
Yeah, that has the pull.
Yeah.
I can't think of their name.
I can't either.
You're absolutely right.
And I know, I think it wasn't Edison Mission was the earlier one, like an earlier version of that? That actually had the spinning and...
Little turbine, right, yeah.
Small solar panels, so it worked off of both. So no matter what the weather was, you got electricity generated.
So I think what we will come back to you with is a, the other versions that you'd like to see. But we'll also, with your permission, start working on a request for proposal for fabrication of the signs. Because I think we're down to saying we like the concepts that we're seeing and we could see ourselves investing in some signs this year.
You know, can I, I can't help it.
Come on.
Whether they're the artificial stone or whether they're the natural stone, Mike, again, you're in the business, but I'm just... I mean, these budget numbers that are on here are nothing more than budget numbers and they're probably high because you don't want to come in low for discussion like this. So I'm a little leery about basing this decision on these numbers that you're looking at.
Agreed.
Because I look at these numbers and I'm thinking they're extremely high.
For natural?
For either one.
Okay.
I'm thinking they're extremely high. I mean, I can tell you right now, my foundation for that right there is $2,200 bucks.
So we had estimated, and I think we were thinking of getting the same type of sign that we have now, and we budgeted $10,000 per sign. Granted, it included the design face, which we estimated to be about $5,000. But this is coming in significantly less and it's a much more substantial sign than we had planned on. But again, not my business. And we will be going out for an RFP.
I guess what I'm thinking, because we don't know what the number's going to come back at until it actually comes back, is you could bid one as the base price and the other one, the other type of material is an alternate.
So we showed them this design and that's what their bid was based on. And they said that the natural materials were 2.5 times the cost of the man-made. Aubrey sign in Batavia.
And they do a turnkey on signs?
They do monument, yeah.
Yeah, they...
They do the whole monument?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's up to you guys. I won't be here, but I...
It sounds really high.
The idea would be a dual base on one and alternate on the other.
But that's why we go out to bid, right? I mean, we're not here today to say $48,000 is the right price.
Right.
No, what Dave is saying is get the bid for the one and then an alternate for the second.
You can bid all, if you decide to do all 13, get a bid on all 13 at a base price with the man-made material, but the alternate would be...
Be with the real material.
And the reason why I'm saying that is because if you're looking at dollars here, you might, if you'd have known that the one material versus the other would be this price instead of what you're thinking, you may have made a different decision.
Right.
I think that a lot comes into it, though, more than the, I mean, looks, maintenance, longevity. There are a lot of factors that are unknown to us right now, so...
And I can tell you that there's a lot of very good artificial stones out there. But again, it's just like when you buy something that's brand new on the market and they give you, they tell you it's going to last 50 years. It hasn't been on the market for 50 years. How do you know?
You don't know.
So...
I know.
I just can't help but think of the pavers up here on 31.
Yeah, Jeff, what's your opinion on these materials?
I can't disagree with what you're saying, that the natural are probably going to last a little longer, but there's going to be more maintenance with the two. So it's, you know, I don't really have a big, different opinion than you do. The man-made materials are exactly what you said, that you can't say they're 50 years. They're going to be around for 50 years. You're kind of rolling the dice.
Right.
But are we building a 50-year sign? I guess that's a question, too. And how does that break down how many signs and how many years?
Well, our current sign, if we've had it for 40 years...
There you go.
I kind of think you are, really. I mean, at least the structure itself. And some council in the future might decide they want a different sign that they can put in there.
And is that easy to do?
But the structure itself, you're going to put it at the corporate limits and we can't expand our corporate limits more we are.
I agree with what Dave said because I think we just have more options at that point. Plus, he just kind of warned us that he'll come back and sit in the front row and we'll hear from him. We're adding that off.
Right.
No, I will be down there.
I know you will. So just trying to fix it.
Any other comments before we move on?
Yeah, this went a lot better than the branding discussion.
It sure did, didn't it? Wow.
Sorry. Sorry, designed by committee.
That was too soon. That was your committee.
Hey, I guess we're going to go on to project status, Laura?
She left.
Left the building. Okay, we've got a lot of things going on. John Dillon has been speaking with our windmill expert from Nebraska about what it will cost to fix the windmill that's right outside here in our plaza that was damaged a few weeks ago by the windstorm. And it's significantly less than we thought. It's $2,500 to fix that. So I'm sure that we can find the resources internally to do that. Although, I do want to mention that we have had a number of people that have contacted us and wanted to offer to make a donation to assist us with the repair of the windmill. And so since some have already donated, I wondered if you thought it would be okay if I went ahead and said, if you are interested in making a donation for the repair of the windmill and allow people to make donations in that way? Yeah. Okay, great. Also, on project status, I wanted to talk about, one of the goals that's in our strategic action plan is for us to conduct a customer service training for employees that are, you know, public-facing. And those number, and about 90 people within our organization are interacting with the public on a regular basis. We interviewed and feel very comfortable with the program developed at Wabasi Community College's Corporate Training Department. And it would cost approximately $200 per employee for 90 attendees. And they'd be receiving eight hours of instruction. It is combined customer service and also conflict resolution training, which I think is a very nice complement to the customer service training. I didn't have budget for this this year, though. So that is an $18,000 expense. However, I really feel confident that we could make a transfer from the Administration Department's Professional Services line item over into the Administration Department's Training Budget to account for this. And I think it is appropriate for it to be part of the Administration Training Budget, both because it is directly lined up with our Strategic Action Plan, but also because it crosses every other department within the organization. And so it's sort of an Administration Department-sponsored activity that we're engaging in. So with your approval, and we will bring that back as a resolution, to have that transfer made. Okay? Also wanted to alert everyone to a great program that we have here on April 4th. It is called Conservation at Home. And I want to get back to the homepage so I can give you more information about it. It is, the Conservation Foundation is going to help our residents learn how to enhance your home's value to wildlife and plants. The program encourages and recognizes property owners that protect and/or create yards that are environmentally friendly and conserve water. This is a really important thing in our community because you heard Jeremy talk earlier about how we depend on our wells for our water. And it's important that all of us engage in conservation activities. And that includes the type of plants that we put in our yard. So on April 4th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, right here in this room, we're going to have that program. Also want to let everybody know that the staff met with the Bicycle Commission on Friday to listen to a 90-minute presentation that was about the most recent trends in creating safe routes for bicycles as part of our ongoing conversation about creating great walking and biking routes through our community. And also, previously, our Communication Coordinator had been the city representative on a group that included the Environmental Commission, Abby Beck and her Wellness, Well Batavia Commission, to talk about the walking and the biking routes and also wayfinding associated with that. So Main Street is also part of that. So we're renewing that conversation as well. And also, Community Development, Public Works, and Economic Development took a walk over to North Water Street last week to look at a few different possible locations for the pop-up chalet idea that we had previously been discussing. We had met with Main Street and then we wanted to kind of like look at what areas looked the most feasible. There are challenges in grade, looking at either the east side of River, North River Street or the north side of Franklin Street. And so it would be easiest to put them on about six parking spaces in the existing Larson Becker parking lot. So we're going to target that as the possible location. Certainly, you know, nothing's written in stone at this point. But we also have a meeting later this week with Main Street to talk about the design of the program. In other words, what does the application process look like? Who would qualify for those? What entity is going to be the one to collect the rent? What entity is the one that's going to be responsible for the maintenance of those? And at the same time, we're going to be investigating about, you know, the costs for building the chalets themselves. So progress on that is going very well. The former Avenue Chevrolet and Raising Cane's development was approved at the City Council meeting on March 18th. And we're hoping to have the plat recorded shortly so that the land sale transaction can be closed at the end of this month. Always interested in when these downtown restaurants are going to open. Boca Ditos, Oak and Swine, I don't know about. But we have heard that the Riverside Pizza Restaurant possibly around mid-May time period. So that really is soon. I'm not even kidding. Also, the 2018 Batavia Police Department Employee Award recipients were recently selected and announced. Detective Matt Miller was selected as the Police Officer of the Year. And Officer Justin Howe, who was our Student Resource Officer at Batavia High School, received the honorable mention for this award. Records Technician Pamela Stillen was selected as the Civilian Employee of the Year. And Evidence Custodian Fred Buss received the honorable mention for that award. And Batavia Citizen and Batavia Police Pension Board Vice President Ralph Beck received the Joseph Burke Award for Professionalism for his 30 years of service to the members of the department through his work on the Pension Board. A lot of things going on in Public Works. Bids are coming in for the work that's about to begin. Bids were received and opened for the Ward 1 Drainage Project, which will be coming to the Committee of the Whole in early April. Bids were received and opened for the Mahoney Creek Bank Stabilization Project, coming to Committee of the Whole in early April as well. And bids are advertised for the Area 3 Drainage Project. That was a little bit delayed due to the EPA loan process. But construction completion is still anticipated for the end of 2019. We also received bids for our brush collection and we're in the process of checking references for the low bidder. Also, we are anticipating that there will be a spring burn at the basin that's next to the Tower Car Wash and Holy Cross Hospital. That area back over there is in need of some maintenance. And we have received about a dozen applications for the Communications Coordinator position so far. My intent is to schedule interviews with qualified candidates as soon as possible so that we can get that position filled very, very soon. And early voting continues here at City Hall. It's from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM this week. And we received notice from the Cane County Department of Transportation that they are going to... going to be doing a complete rebuild of the multi-use path that's on the west side of Kirk Road from Butterfield Road North, and that construction is going to begin on April 1st, and they anticipate that that construction is going to take about two months and will sometimes result in a single-lane closure in the southbound lanes.
I had a question on that. Didn't they just repave a whole bunch of that when they did the storm sewer?
I...
On the west side, between like, you know, not Geese, but maybe Chilum and Pine?
I haven't been down there recently, but my experience on that path is that it's been terrible. I mean, not quite as terrible as the one that's on Fabian, right west of 31. I mean, that's definitely a spot that is in need of dire repair, but I don't know if anybody else is aware of the condition of that path, but I don't think that it has been done recently, but I could be wrong.
I think part of it was, but not all of it, just part of it.
And also, all of the annual reports that department heads were presenting over the course of the last six weeks are now available on the city's website. You can get that right from the city's homepage. And that's all I have. Less than anything else, any questions?
Do we have any questions, Laura?
Laura, who's been doing all of the press and stuff on Facebook now? Who's been writing all those and stuff?
Well, it's a lot of copying and pasting, but some...
Sounds like your voice.
Yeah.
It is your voice.
Yeah, because it looks really good. I'm like, oh, this looks really good. I wonder who's doing it. They should keep doing it. Oh, I guess not.
Thank you, but no.
Mayor?
I have the opportunity to be... I used to work many years ago up at the radio station with one of the gals who's serving as the election, one of the election judges, and I guess I would describe this, they are telling me that the early voting for the first week was absolutely some of the worst they've ever seen as far as the numbers. It's like 114 people for the entire week, and there hasn't been much that I've seen come in there this week. It is, you know, it's very minimal interest or whatever it is going on here. So, I just share that with everybody, so if you've got friends that you know need to vote. We had a little bit of a misfire involving the race in the third ward. Up this weekend, they had a weekend poll at the Homestead, and they inadvertently left off the ballot the name of the only candidate running for third ward alderman. Now, the saving grace in that probably is the fact that that third ward candidate does not have an opponent, so there wasn't any... But there was not, there will obviously not be a right vote counted in that. The other wards were all fine, but the third ward up at the Homestead was not counted as, wasn't on the ballot. So, that, we got that, I made a call, several other people did, on Monday morning to the county clerk, and we got that, they assured me it has been corrected and will not be going forth, but there was some clerical glitch that allowed that to occur.
Okay.
Bill, Laura?
That reminds me that on election night, April 2nd, we will not have a Committee of the Whole meeting.
Dan?
I just want to say, Elliot and I had the opportunity to meet at the Homestead this last week on Thursday. We did another coffee morning thing, and we were very well-received and always enjoyed giving a presentation there. I don't think there's any lack of love for this ward, judged by all the great questions that they had. A lot of things regarding state taxes and whatnot, and a lot of things that you and I could not very well answer for them. But they were very engaged, and some opponents from Campana came up afterwards and had some great words for us. So, it was nice.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Absolutely.
So, I took my mother over to the Homestead to vote. And I... Oh, sorry, I'm Susan Alderson. I took my mother over to the Homestead to vote, and I just wanted to put this out here. I know it's been addressed, but I do think it's important to point out that my mother got a ballot that didn't have the alderman in it, and I did bring it up. I'd just like to point out that while it's not a big deal, there's only one candidate, I do have some concerns about the fact that an inaccurate ballot was put out, and my understanding is that, oh, well, it's been corrected now, but yet my mother didn't get to vote on a fair ballot. So, I just wanted to put that out there and say, "I'm glad it's been corrected," but I do think it's something to be a little bit concerned about.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just wanted to...
Definitely.
Bring that to your attention. Thank you.
And I also wanted to point out, Laura brought up a little earlier, that Abby Beck was on a couple of different committees, and she's here tonight, and I just wanted to point out that not only Abby, but some of the other candidates that are running for the election are here again tonight and have been here for many months now in advance of the election, of which they hope to win a race in. So, I think that's very admirable of them to put their time in ahead of time. Thank you for coming. Anybody else have anything? Okay, motion to...
So moved.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Paul Hightie.
Wow. Quick draw.
Quick draw. Quick draw.